Good morning, everyone. I'm so excited to be here now with my fellow board members and those in the audience. This morning, we have a great presentation and discussion on single stair construction. It's something that's so dear to the planning board's heart. We're all about providing more housing in the county, everywhere, all types, all income levels, and we really feel that this will help in order to bring forth that vision. This morning, we have Paul Mortensen from the Planning Department to present this, and he spearheaded this presentation, and so we're so delighted, Paul, for you doing this. And I'm turning it over to you now. So thank you so much, and we're really, really excited to be here today. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Very happy to be here, talking about this. I think it's a huge step forward for the state and for our county, and hopefully, something that will occur across this country to help stimulate more housing. I am Paul Mortensen. I'm the Senior Urban Designer in the Director's Office. I also began several years ago the Design Excellence Program in the office, and now, actually, I am now leading Planning Innovation in the Planning Department. So very excited to be a part of that and be here. I'm here today to moderate the discussion on single stair construction with you and several guests familiar with this topic. The format of the discussion will include some small presentations and then questions and answers between you, the speakers, and anyone attending here in the auditorium. So we hope it will be a robust, full discussion on this topic. Our speakers today are, one, District 19 Delegate Vaughn Stewart, who is here. He's author of the past Maryland state legislation to study single stair construction building code modifications in Maryland. We also have Councilmember Ryan Dorsey, Baltimore City District 3 Councilmember. He's proponent and author of the Baltimore Single Stair Construction Building Code Modifications, and he was a juror in the recent CNU Mid-Atlantic Design, Single Stair Design Competition that actually occurred a few months ago. To my right, at the end, Julian Frost. He's Assistant Project Manager at Lorax Partnership and a board member of the CNU, the CNU Congress for New Urbanism, just to make sure everybody's aware of that. But CNU Mid-Atlantic, he was one of the managers of the CNU Single Stair Competition. And then finally, last but not least, we have Daniel Morales of Morales Architects, and he was the winner of this year's CNU Design Competition for Single Stairs. Both Julian and Daniel presented the single stair construction concepts, by the way, at this year's CNU 33 in Providence, Rhode Island. So, as you can see here, you begin to see that a great portion of the world, and if you've been to Paris or anywhere in Europe, and you've walked down streets and seen the five-story buildings, almost every one of those is served by a single stair. And so, most of the world accommodates that. The International Building Code, but in the United States, the International Building Code is the foundation of the state and local government building codes, which currently requires buildings above three stories to have two separate staircases accessible from all points on each floor. So you can see the United States in yellow, three stories. Canada, primarily, two stories allowed. Everywhere else, more. Initially, and understandably, for life safety, the multi-stair increases, but today, multi-stair increases construction costs and limits the range and size of floor plans available for architects and residents of multifamily buildings. Most countries in the world allowed single stair construction, and most single stair advocates maintain that the advances in fire prevention techniques have rendered the two-stair requirement largely redundant. Following the 1860 Manhattan Tenement Fire, New York Legislature passed a law requiring that fire escapes on new buildings must have a second stair exit allowing for free egress as part of the construction culture. Several fires after this occurrence that only strengthened, they only strengthened the requirements, and so, two stairs became a common theme and common element of all fire codes and building codes across the United States. The D.C. passed a Fire Escape Act requiring a second exterior stair on many of the existing taller D.C. buildings in 1906. Today, all buildings over three stories require two sets of stairs linked by a hallway, even though modern safety features have made multifamily housing remarkably safe. Second stairs in the hallways between them also take up a lot of space. Seven percent or more of a building's floor area in a small or medium-sized building is taken up by a second stair and hallway. This image shows, Harvard Study indicates efficiencies that could occur on a typical Boston residential lot in equal-sized buildings with the two-stair alternatives. In this case, the single stair is 10% more efficient, allowing more room for the units. You can see the lot size there. Typical standard Boston residential lot is about 85 feet by 54 feet in size. So, two buildings, same size, more efficient. Today, California, Minnesota, Montana, Oregon, Tennessee, Virginia, Texas, and now Maryland are all either changing codes to allow up to six-story single stair buildings, or they are studying these changes. North Carolina is currently studying eight stories for a single stair. Single stair buildings also allow more varied unit layouts by allowing units to be freely arranged around a central staircase, which gives flexibility to allow for more family-friendly three- and four-bedroom units. This can also improve daylighting and airflow as units can span the depth of the lot instead of being aggregated to either side of a corridor. All of this, in turn, allows for many more smaller lots to be developable within high-density areas, which can make these lots more feasible for smaller developers to develop the lots. As you can see here, Portland and Boston both have determined how many more individual lots could be feasible for up to six-story buildings in their jurisdictions, and that's a lot. I think we got here. There we are. So, the bottom image here is a small lot typically in San Francisco, which is 25 feet wide, and they're studying allowing the taller buildings in San Francisco as well. But that's a single unit, so each floor, up to six floors, could have one or more units. And you can see some of the differences in the image above, between sort of typical mid-rise wood-frame construction buildings on the left in North America, and then on the right, the type of buildings that have been created within Europe, in this case, Amsterdam. So now, I'd like to turn it over to introduce our District 19 Delegate Vaughn Stewart to talk about the state legislature. He helped to author, and then we'll go to the next speakers.
Well, thanks very much, Paul. I just want to... It does often help when you press the button to turn on the microphone. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, all of you, for inviting me. My name is Vaughn Stewart. I represent District 19 in the Maryland House of Delegates. District 19, as I'm sure many of you know, includes Glenmont, Aspen Hill, the Shady Grove area. I'm actually proud to have both term and I of the red line of the metro in District 19, and I serve on the Environment and Transportation Committee in the House of Delegates, where I've done a lot of work around housing and zoning and trying to push Maryland in the direction of expanding the tools available that we have to produce more housing. And I want to, of course, just tip my cap to the entire board for your laser focus on this issue, because I think affordability is probably the biggest issue facing Montgomery County residents right now, and I think housing affordability is the biggest component of that broader affordability strain that my constituents and then our neighbors are facing. So, really appreciate y'all's work and focus on this issue in particular. I have been paying attention to this idea of other states looking into single stairway liberalization and reform for quite a few years, and a number of states have moved faster than we have, mostly with study bills, mostly sort of taking a slower and more methodical approach to this, seeing what may work in their own jurisdictions, and then moving from there. And so, I've been kicking this idea around for the last few years, and finally, about a year ago, last interim, a number of housing advocates, all of whom y'all know and who are frequent flyers here before the Planning Board, approached myself and Senator Jeff Waldstreich of District 18, and said, hey, maybe this is the year that we finally copy a lot of these other states' work and put together a study bill. And so, you see here, thanks to Paul, a nice little recap of the bill. It's very straightforward, and it's more or less in the same form that we introduced it in, which is to say that the state, and specifically the Department of Labor, should conduct a study into the viability of single stairway reform in Maryland. And what that means is looking into, of course, fire safety, looking into feasibility, zoning codes, but ultimately, the goal is to have recommendations to the state legislature that then we could maybe move forward with in a more aggressive posture in the future. So the timeline is that the Department of Labor assures me that they're going to kick off the study later this year, probably around November, December of 2025, and the report is due December 1, 2026. So most of the stakeholder engagement and most of the work they're going to be doing is next calendar year, and so we're hoping that, you know, by December 1, 2026, we'll have hot-off-the-presses a new study that we can use to formulate some legislation. It's going to be a quick turnaround, but formulate some new legislation by the 2027 session, where we'll have a lot of new legislators and new faces and new people in new places, but we're hoping that we can turn those recommendations into action. Another familiar topic to y'all is, of course, accessory dwelling units, and we followed a little bit of a similar model with an ADU bill that we were able to pass this past session as well, where it started as a work group, and the work group issued recommendations that were broadly adopted. And in Annapolis, having that kind of work group or a study at your back is really kind of a wind at your sail that can make passage of these types of bills easier in front of a legislature that, to be honest, a lot of this stuff is kind of a matter of first impression for them. And I think, if anyone's familiar with the Maryland General Assembly, you know that it's really only recently, in the last few years, that we have been looking at zoning and housing as something that the state should be involved in at all. And so, there's still a lot of education work to be done, I think, with my colleagues around these issues. But I'm pleased to report that this bill passed overwhelmingly in both the House and the Senate with bipartisan majorities. I think it was something like 113 to 25 in the House, don't quote me exactly, give or take, and I think it was something like 35 to 7 in the Senate. So that's, those are, you know, very strong numbers that suggest that across the ideological spectrum, there's a lot of interest in this issue, and a lot of interest in seeing what kind of, you know, changes we can make to get more housing supply. I'll also note that just in terms of the legislative discourse, what worked, what arguments, you know, my colleagues seem to move them the most. Surprisingly, to me, it really wasn't about necessarily how much more affordable it is to build new construction without a second stairway. It really was kind of this livability argument from the architects, that, you know, when you open up new types of design models by having the single staircase, you can provide more units to have natural light, and especially, you know, if you're looking at retrofits of existing buildings, it opens up a lot more possibilities to have livable, beautiful spaces that are also, don't necessarily all look the same. And I think for my colleagues, especially those who are not as laser-focused on housing production as some of the people in this room are, to them, that kind of livability or, you know, allowing more people to have a dignified existence with multiple rooms in their units, having that natural light, I think, was actually sort of a winning argument. I will note that, you know, if you take a look at the bill, the way that the structure works is that the Labor Secretary conducts the study in consultation with the fire marshal, a representative from the firefighters' union, and a number of other fire officials. And this was an amendment that we added because we did get some initial pushback from the fire, you know, professional fire folks in Annapolis, from the fire marshal on down, that I think their gut reaction to this, quite understandably, was, whoa, 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 what are we doing here? Isn't this a little scary? And so, in order to get their neutrality, at least, if not support for the bill, we said, let's make sure that you guys are absolutely part of this process. And I think that will only help the study, because certainly, I think, you know, the biggest pushback to this in other areas has been the impact on fire safety and response times. And so, I think to have that many fire professionals at the table while crafting this, I think that the ultimate product that the Department of Labor produces in late 2026, well, I think, have, you know, if we can get the implementor from the fire safety officials for moving forward with something like this, I think it'll have that much more persuasive power to my colleagues, hopefully, in the 2027 session. But obviously, while this conversation is happening in Annapolis, y'all are starting to have your own conversation here. You know, local officials, for example, Councilmember Dorsey, who has been an advocate of this for a long time and who has been in my ear about this for a long time, are moving ahead on a municipal and on a county level, and I think that's all really exciting for us to move in concert. And what I'm really hopeful about from this study is that whether it yields, you know, some kind of new building code language on the state level, whether it's recommendations, whether it's, you know, technical assistance or technical assistance grants to localities, that we can all kind of row in the same direction here using not only the ingenuity that you see at the table and y'all's interests, but also to have this study and that we can wield positively to get more housing built. So with that, I'll shut up, but I really thank you all again for the invitation, and thank you for your interest in what I think is a really important topic.
Thank you very much. Let me see if I can get to the next one.
Yeah, while you're getting that together, I just want to say, Delegate Stewart, thank you so much. I mean, we couldn't be here without your leadership and getting the bill passed, and so, we're really looking forward to it, and thanks for, you know, as I say, Congressman Lewis, we talked about a quote of his this morning. You see something, say something, and you kept up with it and make sure it finally happened. So thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Which one is running your presentation?
Julian's running, please.
Okay.
Oh, I was thinking...
Councilman, I was thinking you could speak first about the legislation, and then I could talk about the competition. Is that okay?
Sure. Great. We got a plan. Again, I'm Ryan Dorsey, City Council in Baltimore. We got great delegates in Baltimore, but my favorite is the one that's sitting right next to me here, so you all are very in good hands. I was first elected in 2016, and I think that studies like Delegate Stewart's are really important to help move issues statewide. I also think that local action is really important to help move things statewide as well. And so, I'm really thankful that the Planning Board here, the commission, is so interested in moving this along. And it doesn't necessarily have to come from a political elected official going like, I want to make this policy change. It's my bill. I want to do this thing. And there's a different kind of vibe to that. But I'm very fortunate in Baltimore that we have really strong support also from Mayor Scott and our City Council President and other members of the City Council recognizing the seriousness of the housing crisis and the affordability crisis in the country, and what can and needs to be done at the local level to address this in a variety of different ways. This was introduced as my bill along with a package of other bills that attack this issue of housing, buildability, and city livability and affordability from a variety of different ways, including other zoning-related bills. Just as a note on, just I think, the importance of local action at the state level. When I first joined the City Council in 2016, Baltimore had been, for like 20 years, part of this state-level debate about the Home Act, source-of-income discrimination, that there had, for 20 years, had been this debate at the state level about, should we prohibit source-of-income discrimination? And folks at the state level were often saying, isn't this a Baltimore city issue? Why doesn't Baltimore City do this at the local level before we go ahead and do this at the state level? And folks in Baltimore City were saying, we support this at the state level, but we don't want to be the hole in the donut. And it was a terrible debate, and I just said, look, if Baltimore City is the thing that this whole thing is hinging on at the state level, I'm just going to lead on this. And we passed the Home Act, and then within the next three months, two other Maryland jurisdictions passed the same thing, and the next session after that, it was passed as a state-level bill. So we have direct experience with how taking this local action on important topics can lead to change at the state level. As Paul said, this originated, this double-loaded corridor concept, the two-stair concept arose out of fire safety issues at a time when, essentially, if a fire began in any part of a building, it was basically expected that the whole building was going up in flames. And so, the mentality about fire safety was, get everybody out of the building as fast as possible, create multiple ways to get people out of the building. And here we are, you know, near 100 years later, and we have so many other tools to our advantage, right? We have the idea of one-hour and 90-minute and two-hour fire-rated walls, floors, doors, ceilings. We have automatic sprinkler systems that didn't exist 100 years ago. We have the idea of pressurized staircases so that the staircase can't be filled with smoke when somebody's trying to get out and a fire... smoke when somebody's trying to get out and a fire rescue is trying to come in. And all of these things combined make it so that if a fire starts in the kitchen of one unit, it's probably going to stop in the kitchen of that unit and not even spread to the next room over in that, in that same unit, let alone another unit in the building or the next floor. All of the provisions of Seattle's single-stair law that has existed since the 1970s and where this has not been any more a fire concern there than six-story construction has been in all of the rest of the majority of the world that has always allowed this. These tools are what is incorporated into Baltimore's bill and that I would expect would be incorporated into any local ordinance and, or state level as this continues to grow across the country as something people recognize the need to make as a change. And what these things amount to is reducing the fire safety concerns that existed 100 years ago when the double-loaded corridor concept came about so significantly that there is not a difference in the level of safety between a double-loaded corridor building and a single-stair building. And as Julian goes into the presentation, you'll recognize that there's a dramatic difference between a hallway that is potentially 600 feet long, which is perfectly legal under the double-loaded corridor, and one that cannot be more than 20 feet in length. And that there's a substantial difference to say that even, that a single-stairs building in many ways is actually likely much safer than very large, double-loaded corridor buildings. Last thing I'll say is when I look out the window here, I see buildings, and as I was driving up to get here, I see building after building, not just here, but elsewhere across the country and in cities everywhere, buildings that seek to imitate what other countries achieve by having single-stair building next to single-stair building, next to single-stair building, that the architectural design of buildings today under the double-loaded corridor standard are just bland unless they try to imitate what you can get through single-stair buildings in a run down the end of a block. It's so, it's so debilitating to be limited, to be able to build new housing if the only circumstance under which you can build that new housing is if, first, you can even find a whole block that you can buy, that is available to buy. Second, to have the capital to buy a whole block. Third, the capital to realize a project that goes up five or six stories for the size of a whole block. It's so imposing on the ability to produce at a consistent and rapid rate such that we can meet the level of housing demand that exists in Maryland and across the country and in every jurisdiction in Maryland, that this is a critical, critical part, single-stair policy in making greater opportunity for a greater number of smaller and mid-sized firms to enter the market of working to overcome our housing deficit and crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So my name is Julian Frost. As Paul mentioned, I work for LaRex Partnerships, which is a sustainability and green building consultant in Baltimore City. I was also on the work group that helped draft Delegate Stewart and Senator Walzstrikers' single-stair bill. And I'm on the board of the Congress for the New Urbanism Mid-Atlantic Chapter. So I decided to spearhead organizing a competition around single-stair construction because I wanted to start a wider conversation in Baltimore City, but evidently even further beyond, about the potential of this new way of building, which is actually not that new at all. It's actually timeless and organic. I wanted to get architects thinking about it and maybe more importantly, get developers and decision-makers thinking about it. I wanted something to point people towards, to help them visualize what this concept could look like in a context and an urban fabric that they're familiar with. So I was kind of inspired by a architectural competition in Denver. But what they did was they chose one site and said, make a design for this site. But I thought it would be better to just leave it completely open, to allow people that are submitting to choose where they think single-stair would make sense. And we also told people that were submitting, architects, to assume that all building codes were the same in Baltimore City, just existing building codes, but substituting in Seattle's unique code section for single-stair, which has allowed for six stories of single-stair since 1977. And it turns out that that basically approximates Councilman Dorsey's legislation because the Seattle language has been the model for direct language changes across the country. So we started organizing this last fall when I knew of Councilman Dorsey's intention to introduce a single-stair bill in Baltimore City. And I wanted to be proactive in supporting his legislation. And the timing ended up working out very well because our award ceremony, which was a nice soiree last May in downtown Baltimore, took place just a couple of weeks after Delegate Stewart's bill was signed into law and just a few days after Councilman Dorsey announced his. Yep. Yeah, so as I mentioned, the task was to choose a underutilized infill lot in Baltimore City and use Seattle's unique single-stair code. Naturally, we have plenty of existing single-stair building stock in Baltimore City, so I wanted to see what it would look like to fill in some of those gaps. And there's an existing single-stair building that was recently renovated, and it was allowed to go up to six stories under the International Existing Building Code. So this just shows that this is something we're already doing, and it should be allowed for new construction naturally. As for the distribution of the nine submissions that we got, we, the locations ranged from high-rent, trendy neighborhoods like Hampden to places like the West Baltimore Street Commercial Corridor, which is still waiting for reinvestment. So it showed that single-stair makes sense wherever there are small lots. We paid out a total of $6,000 in prize money to the finalists, which, a good amount of which was fundraised from local architects and developers, which shows a good amount of interest. I think the main takeaways and benefits that we got from this competition was generating visualizations of what this will look like in real life in the Baltimore City urban fabric. And it was also nice to just have something to point to, you know, if there was someone who's skeptical, instead of pointing them to a generic policy brief from an architect in Seattle, being able to show them, hey, this is a building that, like, is right down the street from me that was designed by an architect, and this is what this could look like. As for some limitations, I mean, this isn't a bad thing, but we didn't focus on the development finance or the pro forma. This was really more about the aesthetics and just understanding what this could look like in Baltimore's urban fabric. So that could be, I think there's no doubt that, of the financial advantages of single-stair construction, so we didn't feel like we needed to show that. And also, the competition is focused on small infill lots, which is where single-stair is naturally going to happen first because it's where the double-loaded corridor requirement was previously holding back development from happening. So I think it may be interesting in the future to explore how we can encourage developers to go for the single-stair typology on larger lots on a kind of district level, you know, thinking about things like TOD. You know, how can we structure an RFP and work urban design into it so that developers are actually building chained, single-stair buildings with low-lot coverage that define the street and allow a lot of open space to remain on the site? I'm now going to hand it over to the first-place winner, Daniel Morales, whose submission was chosen for its visual appeal, its embrace of single-stairs virtues in terms of natural light and natural ventilation, and it's also its harmony and integration with the surrounding urban context.
Yeah. Hello, I'm Dan Morales. I'm a local kid, you know, went to BCC and all that. In any case, oh yeah, sure. There we go. Thank you. So I chose this area in downtown Baltimore called the North Loft Historic District. It's above Cannon Yards, next to the harbor downtown. Maryland's got a Maryland medical campus, and then above it is the Lexington Market neighborhood. So it's really at the center of a lot of jewels and potential jewels of downtown Baltimore. So as you can see, the fabric is fine-grained, which is, you know, makes up most old city centers. And the buildings that exist here are exquisite. And this is the lot. So you've got this old bank building and then these kind of warehouse commercial buildings. So here's the bank building, and I did two buildings. When I first saw the site, I thought it was one lot. I went to the survey, and it's two lots, so, which is able to show one of the advantages of this building type, which is the flexibility of layouts. And the virtue, which you, if you're familiar with the European cities, is that there's a lot of great courtyard light, lit spaces. So you create these L-shaped forms that create livable courtyards that help the building breathe and are well-lit. So I have an affordable building here and a market rate, which is part of the program you could pick between those two. And so here you see, on the left is the affordable building, on the right is the market rate. But then when you join their L-shaped spaces, you get one large livable courtyard where all the tenants can come in. It can be a place to see and be seen, which is, I think, the virtue of cities, is that we can see that we're all the same, basically. So then here, this is not the best quality drawing, unfortunately, but here you can see the elevations and how they fit into the context, which goes to another point, which is if you just make buildings blend into the character of a neighborhood, residents will be much more likely to approve them. And again, you speed up the approvals process, which minimizes the lawyers and the, no offense to any profession whatsoever, but just the cost that keep smaller builders from engaging in the market, which would, of course, generate more economic activity and ultimately more tax revenue. Here are just some sections through the buildings and how it's built. This is very architectonic stuff. And then here just shows the two buildings in diagrams, how they were built, how the cores relate to the units around them, and how efficient they are. And then this last diagram shows how having two aspects, meaning two frontages on the light and air, make buildings more livable, more breathable, and just more pleasant to be, and in the long run, more resilient. Because if we're going to have less energy and less, less money, basically, to repair things over time, it's better that buildings survive possible energy shortages, light blackouts, and don't rely on entirely mechanical systems to breathe and live. So ultimately, your fabric will be more resilient. And then this just shows a quick diagram of the two lots, one with a standard, single corridor, one on the right, which is the scheme I did. And it shows how you have a, there's actually more square footage in the open space, but the courtyard is less, is not as nice. And you're forced into units that are more repetitive, so you only cater to these markets that are, you know, a new person out of college or whatever, et cetera, et cetera, versus adapting to markets where families with kids, single mothers with kids, who need to take advantage of these not needing a car neighborhoods like downtowns. You know, in other words, it creates more equity. It allows more people to live in a more heterogeneous society, the way society actually is. And here is another diagram that shows more to the fire issue, that shows if you have this long corridor, they allow these 20 feet from the end units to this fire stair. So de facto, this is already a single-stair building. If a fire breaks out in the middle, this is that 20-foot run through smoke to get to this spot, and this is that 20-foot run. You know, these fire prevention measures that the council member mentioned, they won't ultimately stop a fire, but they'll retard it enough to get people safe. And that's ultimately the goal of, you know, the county and the government, is to, you know, provide safety. And so here's this, for example, in the middle, here's a city, a shot of Paris, pretty mundane buildings, just plaster on masonry walls, but they're all five, six stories, and they create a wonderful streetscape. Here are New York buildings, arguably better, more attractive. They all have firescapes once the law was passed. So again, the costs and the fine-grained nature of streets that have smaller, organically built over time buildings, they just make for better pedestrian experiences. That's a whole nother lecture on how the general ADHD nature of human beings likes variety, you know, nature being good and monotone music being bad, et cetera. And then in this case, here you'll see just two diagrams of typical apartment buildings that are, that are nice, pleasant, modern, traditional, whatever style you prefer. And then above, just a bunch of little Paris buildings, store-bought details, built by builders, no architects involved, streets that now are considered some of the best in the world. And then here, lastly, is just a building in Hoboken infill, what they call a podium building, which is a concrete base. And then four, you can go up to five, in terms of stick construction. So this is what they build now, the cheapest, nothing cutting-edge, you know, get all the little guys in there to build. And then here's a building in New York, one of the lovely historic neighborhoods that everyone likes. They're well detailed, they're well scaled. It almost looks like the same building. So in other words, we can get this stuff going to fill these market needs safely and humanely, and that's it.
Thank you, everyone. I have a couple of questions, and then I'd like just to open it up for questions from you and from the audience. It'd be great. One of the things I wanted to ask for Councilmember Dorsey, at the awards for the single-stair competition, you talked a little bit about your interaction with the fire departments. And I'm wondering if you could maybe talk a little bit about that here.
Sure. Just as a political matter, you never want the unions that are your friends coming out in opposition to your initiatives. They were the very first people that I contacted when I, you know, knew that I was going to put forth this bill. I got in touch with both the Fire Officers Union as well as the Firefighters Union Presidents. And, you know, this is at a time when in Baltimore City, we've had some terrible, tragic deaths, both of people in houses, but also firefighters. We've had, I think, five firefighter deaths in the last year and a half, two years. And our fire union officials said, look, the kind of buildings where we're facing these kind of tragic circumstances are not buildings that are fully sprinkled and that have fire-rated walls and doors. These are buildings that were built a long time ago and are in derelict condition, and the standards that you're talking about with this single-stair bill are so rigorous that these are going to be among the safest buildings you could possibly have a fire in, should one occur. And that we're not really concerned with that, and that we certainly recognize the challenges of cost of living and the need for additional housing, and that we don't want to be the ones standing in the way of Baltimore making the necessary progress. We've also similarly then had very constructive conversations with the, with the fire code officials in the city, you know, with minimal kind of requests for tweaks to make sure that the circumstances were to their liking. And in many cases, it was on the front end, as we were talking about, just the concept, not even looking at the details, they were asking for things that were already going to be in the model that we would draw from, things like, let's just make sure that the Things like, "Let's just make sure that the staircase is a certain width, so that we can have a person going up at the same time as a person coming down." Very basic things that are, you know, sensible. And as this is sensible policy change, it's going to incorporate those things into it in the first place. And so we feel like we're in a very good place. And again, it is also helpful that we have our mayor also very in support of this policy change as well.
Thank you very much. The, another, I think we hit it a little bit in these presentations, but you already know that this, I think there's a lot of benefits to this type of construction on smaller lots. It brings smaller lots into kind of the development market, where we can build, like this example that you see here, a very narrow lot can be built with a single stair efficiently, where requiring two stairs all of a sudden kind of takes it out of the realm of affordability for a developer to actually realize. So, I think that's important, but maybe one of the other things that I'd like maybe one of the panelists to get into a little bit more is how this single stair can also be used on larger lots, where we do have more room, but with the ability to form maybe better urbanism, to be able to kind of accommodate, you know, and frame blocks in a better way. One of you can talk to that.
I mean, that's kind of the question I'm coming with. Like, I've been working on getting this legalized. And in my view, the next step after legalization is figuring out how to allow developers a way to not just default to the double-loaded corridor in a TOD context, for example, as I mentioned. So, I mean, as I mentioned, you know, that could work in the land disposition process, in a master plan, in an RFP for a large city-owned property that's going to be sold to a private developer. I don't know exactly what the mechanism is, but I think we have the models, and those already exist. I think you just need to look at modern eco-district and brownfield development in Europe as the model for what a whole district built on the idea of single-stair, low lot coverage can look like. So I think, I think really taking inspiration from abroad is really key here. So I would encourage anyone looking at that to look at places like Nantes in France, or a whole laundry list of places that are doing interesting eco-district development.
Great. Now, open it up to questions I'm sure you all have, and hopefully people in the audience will have as well.
Can I just ask a very, it may be a stupid question, but I'm not an architect, I'm engineer. So I don't know, when the code requires two way of ingress and egress, where the elevator stands? Is the elevator counted as one, or those two has to be physical stairs?
Yes, elevator does not count.
Okay. That's what, now it makes sense, because I was not sure about that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, yep, I invite my fellow board members to ask questions if possible. And, but just thank you for your presentations. It was good to learn about, from the actual, the policy side, and how that you made it happen, and also the actual, the design side. It was interesting to, I do feel that it would provide more opportunity for smaller builders to get involved, different, more architectural differences, as I think, if you could do it this way. And I, and as you said, started out, you may need to be able to get these large sites, that you, you know, as you see some of these projects here, and maybe there's a way where smaller sites can make this happen faster. And even if you had a medium-sized site, maybe there's a way through fee simple, you know, you can do two projects or something side by side, and make it, make it happen that way. So, when you did, and thank you, Daniel, for, I mean, congratulations on winning the competition. Did you find out, or did the people that were participating in the competition, is there like an optimal size or something for doing the, or for doing a single-stair project? And you looked at Baltimore and some other places. Is there about the right size that makes it more efficient than other sizes?
Well, its main virtue is the flexibility that you're able to play with the plan. So there isn't really an optimal size, because you can do small lots, and you can do medium, and you can do large. But the other aspect is the streetscape, it's where people live. And I was involved, for example, in a project that Fenton and Wayne, opposite the library, where they had a big central apartment building. And they originally proposed one half a block building. And the neighbors said, "No, no, no," and all of a sudden, the clock is ticking and money's being spent. And so again, this is to illuminate that small developers wouldn't be able to afford to do this. So I got involved through the Citizens Committee, because I live in that neighborhood. And I just told the developer, "Hey, look, why don't we just break this facade down to have a finer-grained street?" And then we gave them more square footage. So we put more money in their pocket for them to break this, the building down. And then the neighbors said, "Great." Now, every day when I walk to the supermarket, it'll be more pleasant, it'll be less like Roslyn, right? It'll be more like the old parts of Silver Spring. So, there isn't, to answer your question, there isn't an ideal lot, because when you combine them to bigger lots, you just combine the courtyards, you create a more livable streetscape. But it, but on the street to the public, it definitely creates a better street for the pedestrian experience.
Great.
I would, sorry, can I add something? The, there's a group, the Harvard Center, Joint Center for Housing Studies, that did a report with an architect based in Boston, that did a study of every single parcel in Boston, and kind of laid them out by area. And they showed, basically, there's a minimum size of lot at which you, like, if you go under that, you would not want to build a double-loaded corridor building, because it would be so inefficient. So there is, at least in the context of Boston, there's been a study that shows this certain window of ideal lot size for a single stair. So I'd be happy to link that article for you.
Yeah, that would be great, great. And also, if, once this gets approved more and more, are there some other, have you run up, will you then have to run up against other sort of code things you'd like to change in order to continue to make it more feasible, less costly to build? This more, well, one is like elevators. You know, there was this big piece, you know, the elevators in the US, they're just grown, you know, to be so large. And then, is there a way to maybe get approved, elevators to be smaller in size, so that along with the smaller buildings? I mean, but have you run up against, okay, if we get this done now, we probably will want to tackle these couple of things to make this more feasible?
Yeah, just to say a little bit about elevators, yes, that's absolutely the next thing. I don't know if you all have seen a single-stair tracker website, that's done by the Center for Building in North America, which is one of, I know, it's, it's one of the, it's a think-tank that has really led the charge on single stair. And so they've sort of walked off into the sunset on single stair. They've had a lot of success kind of disseminating it, and getting states to take it up. And as you mentioned, Mr. Harris, that same guy, Stephen Smith, wrote an article in New York Times about a report he did on elevator costs. So, I know Washington State is tackling an elevator reform bill that is going to maybe talk to the elevator labor unions about how they require, they don't allow off-site assembly of elevators to protect that labor onsite. And also, things like, you know, making each elevator as accessible as possible, which results in overall less elevators, which is less accessible. So, so that's absolutely the next thing, but I'm not aware of any legislative efforts at the moment.
The smaller elevator size has also the ADA component to it. That makes it a challenge that is kind of handed down at the national level, whereas a single stair is something that can be changed entirely locally. The ADA, in Europe, it's acceptable accessibility to back a wheelchair into an elevator. And in the United States, ADA requires that you be able to take a wheelchair into an elevator forward-facing and turn around inside of the elevator. And so that makes a big difference between what's possible here and elsewhere. And that's, that's a challenge that I've discussed with Stephen Smith from the Center for Building in North America.
Okay, great. So any comments from up here, including our planning director, Mr. Sartori?
So, I typically have tons of questions, but I'll reserve on them. But the two main questions I have, and to be prepared for this today, I did some independent research with regards to single stair, and how two-stair apartment buildings or residences became the norm. And it was all for the safety of the residents. And one of the concerns that I have with safety of the residents is obviously during a fire emergency. And one of my friends in college, with regards to a dorm at the University of Maryland, he would often say, "This is a one-way, one-way, one-way in, one-way out dorm, every man for himself." And his name's Dom Hill, he's a lawyer now. But when I think of that phrase, I also think of these one-stairway buildings, and how the reality of the human experience in emergency situations will, will, will lead to possible deaths in stairways. Downtown Silver Spring on Georgia Avenue, at an apartment building I used to live in, called Georgian Towers, it's called Thrive now, I think, there was a death in the stairway because of smoke inhalation. And so when I look, and then, and because of that stairway was not able, was not passable by the residents, and I think may have not been passable by the firefighters, I think of situations like that, and how the effectiveness of emergency exit will be thwarted. And so, although I think single stair will allow for more housing, I'm concerned about the safety. And in my own research, in preparing for this, I saw an article, a lengthy article, I use a speed reading app to read them, and it took like 15 minutes to read it. And it talked about people with disabilities and the inconvenience of single stairs in the event of emergency, and the inability of firefighters to help disabled persons exit the premises in a single-stair scenario. And then the person with disability who, who's a fire ladder wouldn't save, nor the ability to, you know, use an elevator during a fire emergency, or a stairwell, could lead to that person's death, when otherwise they would have been saved if there was two stairways. My questions are, how is single stair safer than two stairs? And then finally, will the single-stair type of buildings be limited in zone areas, or will be unabated and allowed in all zoning areas?
First, on the safety issue. Right now, you can build a building that has, so not only does a building have to have two staircases, but it has to have a corridor, that's why we refer to it as the double-loaded corridor standard. It has to have a corridor connecting those two staircases on every floor of the building. And that corridor is allowed to be 600 feet long, connecting those two staircases. So I can have a 640-foot-long hallway, because it can also extend 20 feet beyond the staircases. And, and so, I could have a fire, as Daniel said, in the middle of the building. And what I've got is a 300-foot-long corridor from the middle of the building to the nearest staircase. And I might have eight or 10 units on every floor of that building, all trying to access the staircase that's nearest the half of their building, the building that they're in. And so now I've got, you know, I've got eight, let's say eight units on every floor, trying to descend a single staircase that also might be filled with smoke. And whereas in a single-stair building, the standard, in Seattle, the standard in the Baltimore bill, and the standard that I expect to see across the country, is that floors be limited to having just, no more than four units per floor. So right off the bat, I've gone from having twice as many people, I've gone to having half as many households seeking to descend through that single staircase, by comparison to the circumstance I just described. And that staircase, per these standards, is pressurized, so that it cannot be filled with smoke. There's a system in place to make sure that that's not going to occur, so that rescues can be made in and out. One of the things that I think also is really important in terms of accessibility of single-stair buildings is that, in addition to the Americans with Disabilities Act, we have the Fair Housing Act. And the Fair Housing Act says that any building that is four units or more, or any development that is four units or more, must reserve any ground-floor units as was referred to as adaptable. They don't have to meet all of the standards of the ADA for accessibility, but they have to be constructed in such a way that should an ADA-needs tenant seek to occupy that unit, the landlord or owner can adapt that unit at the ground level to become fully ADA-compliant. And I think there's a greater likelihood that you get development of buildings with four or more units when you allow more ease of going up to just four floors even. It's not that every single-stair building is necessarily going to go up to six or five floors. Many of them will go up only to four stories. And so, you know, you're going to, so I think there's a lot there about the safety. There's a second part of the question, did I hit on it?
I am very well impressed, and you have done your detailed research and prepared to answer.
Great. One other thing that I have thought about several times since I first spoke. If you haven't already, and you really want a beautiful and succinct briefing on this subject, I suggest Googling "Why North America Can't Build Nice Apartments?" Because of one rule, there's a great 12-minute video. And when the person who made that video received a bunch of comments on YouTube in their response saying, "You must just want us all to die in a fire." He made a second 12-minute video that responds directly to these concerns of fire safety. And the, what it boils down to at the end is, there's been much debate in many different places over a very long time about fire safety and the requirement of sprinklerization. And should we do this for all single-family homes? Should we require sprinklers in all single-family homes? Of course, they would all be safer if we made this requirement, but it would come at a cost. It would come at a cost of higher water bills, and, you know, higher construction costs and things like this, and the potential that if there's a small fire in one part of the house, the entire house gets drenched. You have these kind of problems. And ultimately, societally, we have decided the risk is not worth the reward in single-family homes. And the same, it comes to this point where you say, "Okay, if I had two stairs, objectively, is the building safer?" Yes, in some way, but is the juice worth the squeeze? When you put all of the other things in place, limiting the number of units per floor, limiting the distance from the staircase that the entrance to any unit can be, requiring the fire ratings of the doors, the walls, the floors, the ceilings, requiring the pressurized staircase and the automatic sprinkler system for the entire building, you have such mitigation of fire safety concerns off the bat, that is one more level of fire safety a bridge too far? And that's what I think the double-loaded corridor creates, especially, as Julian said, on a smaller lot, where it just becomes completely infeasible to build.
Can I just ask you a question for what you just said? Thank you for these details. These are the details that they had no idea existed. But you said that they limit each floor to only four units per staircase? That doesn't make sense to me, because you have these long corridors that we go there, and they have like about 10, 15 units.
Right.
So how could they limit it just four, if we just have one? So how could they limit it just four if we just have one single stair?
Do you want to speak? No?
That's such, honestly, it's very small.
I, I was in Berlin a couple of years ago. I stayed with three different friends in three different neighborhoods for three nights each. And I had free lodging everywhere I went because I was staying in my friend's apartment building, some of which were new, some of which were old, some of which were a combination of the both. In fact, one was a building that was pre-war, five stories, that had a sixth story added on to it. And every single building that I went into was a single stair building. And they were all laid out somewhat differently. And in general, you go up, a, a, a single stair building is going to be smaller. This is a huge part of the advantage of the, the design flexibility that it creates, that you can build on a smaller footprint. We're not talking about going up one, you know, a single staircase, up six stories, and then down a hundreds of feet-long corridor. That's part of the fire safety of the design, that you're not going down this long staircase and having 20 units on each floor all piling into one staircase. You're limiting the number of people who could be coming up or down a staircase in the event of a fire.
That totally makes sense to me. I, I didn't know that. In my mind, I was imagining more units, as you see a lot of places. Of course, I understand up to six stories, even six stories. I have seen more than four. But if for one, I guess if they want to have more, they have to have two stairs. They cannot use the one stairs. It just has to be four units just going to that.
This is the Seattle model that everybody seems to be adopting. New York does have, I mean, there are plenty of buildings that do have more units that are older buildings.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've been in plenty of buildings in New York that are of concrete and steel construction that do have more than, you know, four units on a given floor. But what the typical model is that we're talking about is limiting to four units per floor.
So I think this is something that this task force is going to work on and decide to come up with what are the requirements to how many, I guess six stories was already in the code, in the bill that you had. But they didn't have the number of units and so on. I'm just curious. Who's on this task force? Do we know? Have we decided?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Madam Vice Chair. So, so the Department of Labor is going to be studying single-stair construction at a state, state level. Their experts are going to be either outsourcing the study work or doing it in-house. And they are required by the bill to consult with a number of different entities, including largely fire safety entities, but also including advocates for affordable housing. So it's not so, you know, there are various different kinds of sort of study bills that we pass in Annapolis. One flavor of them is a work group where you bring in 20 people and they represent different entities. That can be a little bit cumbersome, you know? Sometimes it works out, but I think it's a cumbersome way to do this. We did more of a sort of an agency study flavor where the Department of Labor is going to really kind of take the laboring over here, but in consultation with the number of groups that we want them to consult with. And we think that's going to allow them to sort of accomplish the mission in a little bit less of a wieldy fashion, but with still kind of that stakeholder engagement that you would expect.
Thank you. Yeah, that totally makes sense. And then I guess that I'm assuming they get input at different stages from different groups that it would work.
Exactly. And they're going to take, I think, the entirety, almost the entirety of 2026 to do that work.
Thank you.
I wanted to also just state, in, in the research that I've been doing, I think four units per floor is one requirement that I've seen. Also, I've seen the requirement of no more than 2,500 square feet per floor. So you have a limited number of square.
That's a very big thing. I think that it should be probably part of the topic that, you know, I know that you had up to six stories, but I didn't know that it had up to four units per floor. I think that's a very big thing and it totally makes sense. It's a lot of, you know, skepticism go away when you hear that.
The, four units per floor, no more than 20 feet from the staircase to the entrance of any of the units, and a maximum distance from the staircase to the farthest point in any unit, as well as a maximum floor level for the entire floor. Yes?
Yes, I have Commissioner Linden has not spoken. If you don't mind, get him in and give everyone a little bit of chance to, and then if Commissioner Hethberg, if you'd like to speak too after that, that'd be great. So Commissioner Linden?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Chair Harris. First, thank you so much for being here today. This has been really exciting to, to learn more about. And I know we've been talking a lot about sort of the, from a, from a safety, potential safety standpoint, some of the differences here. But I'm very interested in getting back to kind of more of the livability benefits and characteristics. I think, I think maybe it was, it was either Delegate or Councilmember, you mentioned that in, in conversations with the public or even your other colleagues, it's often the livability characteristics that can be really compelling. And I think for the layperson, it's often hard to understand exactly what the difference in some kind of arcane code, building code can actually mean for not just the design of a building and the units, but sort of the, the lived experience within those units. So I was wondering if you, could you talk a little bit more about, you know, for people with different household sizes and kind of different, different needs or different preferences? What are some of the differences in the actual quality of, of living? But, you know, hypothetically, in, in a single stair building arrangement, or at least what it can sort of provide, some of the flexibility and benefits it can provide? I'd love to hear just a little bit more discussion about that. And then relatedly, I've been reading a little bit about how, you know, we've been talking about how a single stair can really dramatically change the, the whole orientation and layout of, of the building itself and what that can potentially imply for things like energy efficiency and, you know, even higher-order things like environmental sustainability and, and things of that nature. So I was wondering if, two separate related questions, but I was wondering if you could, if someone on the panel could, could speak to those and, and describe kind of what the benefits for both kind of the people living there, but also kind of the, the whole community in terms of sustainability and environmental impact. So thanks again for being here. This has been a really great conversation.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So about double-loaded corridor buildings, I, I like this term for a building with a corridor and two stairs because of the word loading. Like, it's basically like a financial tool to load a hallway with as many units as you can. So developers are naturally incentivized to do more, like a larger number of smaller units. Because like, you know, you can get more rent from two studios than from one three-bedroom apartment. So naturally, and if double-loaded corridor buildings are being built everywhere, you know, we're going to trend towards having smaller units. And in some ways, that's good. Like, we need, we need one bedrooms and studios. But on the other hand, we need units that are attractive to families, whatever form that family might take. Or just people, or family units with more people. So with a single stair or a point-access block configuration, there's almost this natural limitation to it that's really useful. Units almost have to be bigger because if you only have four, they're naturally going to take up a certain amount of space. So often, if you think about a point-access block or a single-stair building, what you're going to have is maybe two, two-bedroom apartments, both of which have windows on opposite sides. And then in the leftover space near the stair and elevator core, you might have just enough space for a studio. So in that way, you, you know, meet the, the demand for studio apartments while also meeting the, the demand for two bedrooms that are fit for a family. Of course, you know, we already talked about natural ventilation and access to natural light. I think another thing, just in that vein, is, you know, in a double-loaded corridor building, open living spaces and bedrooms get the priority for windows. But you often have kitchens that are really far away from any kind of window. You often have bathrooms that are far away from any window. And it's kind of just accepted that it has to be that way because that's how we build. But if you go to Europe, I mean, you know, a lot of kitchens are able, you know, if things get smoky or if there's some natural gas fumes, you know, that can easily be washed out by air coming in from one window and going out the other. Same goes for, you know, moisture and mold in a bathroom. So I think the, the quality of life thing is just huge. And another thing is like, I think, I think in general, you know, people really value the single-family home because it, it allows them to feel kind of set in their space and have access to multiple directions. And I think it can be kind of, I mean, I live, I've lived in an apartment with just a single aspect. And it's like, it's fine. It's, it's my home. It's a rental. But if we want people to maybe buy condos that they really highly value, it might make sense to build in a way that you can have windows on two or three sides and really feel like you have a whole slice of something rather than like a, just a little puzzle piece, if that makes sense. So I think when it comes to condo construction also, it's very important.
Can I share a couple of thoughts on this?
Yeah, please.
The, one of the groups that I've spent a lot of time talking to and talking about is interest for seniors who need to downsize. We have a lot of single-family homeowners who have been in the same home, in the same neighborhood for 30 or 40 years, raised their kids there, raised maybe their grandkids there, and are now empty nesters and don't need three bedrooms, but want to down, and want to downsize in the neighborhood. But if it's a single-family detached home, kind of neighborhood with exclusive, with exclusive single-family zoning, even if you can build an apartment building on the nearest arterial corridor, which maybe has a different zoning standard than the rest of the neighborhood streets, you are still bound to this single, this double-loaded corridor where the only apartments that can be built, even there on this arterial corridor, are ones that are either on the front side or the backside of the central corridor that runs down the place. And so as Julian said, you've got to have a window for each bedroom. And so if you've got two or three bedrooms in that building, the only way to do it is for those bedrooms to line up down one side of the building, basically a galley-style apartment that is really strange. On the other hand, it, because it also incentivizes, because that's so strange, it incentivizes one bedroom, one bedroom, one bedroom, one bedroom, all down the front of the building or the back of the building. And what you don't get is an apartment that also makes space for something that maybe we take for granted, like a dining room. You're not going to get an apartment that has a dining room in a double-loaded corridor building typically. But when you have more flexibility of the layout of the space, you don't necessarily have to use it for a three-bedroom space or a two-bedroom space. Maybe some of that space ends up getting used for a dining room and something that an older couple, somebody that's looking for a little, little different size or style of apartment than the market can really offer, that that becomes an option. On the efficiency side of things, you know, I'm always thinking about the grand-scale inefficiency of single-family detached homes, one after another. There's a huge carbon footprint that is created by this as a housing typology at a per-household level. And there's just something that is just like inherently efficient. If I own a, a single-family detached home because it has three bedrooms and that's my only option for a three-bedroom place, you know, I'm just kind of stuck in this system. But if I can build three-bedroom units into an apartment building and I can build six of them, one on top of the other, that's an overall much greater efficient use of our land and our environmental resources.
And if I could also, Mr. Chair, just briefly, this is a great question, Commissioner Linden. And I think the sort of livability dignity component of this was something that I really heard in Annapolis from my colleagues, is something that really spoke to them. Because not everyone, you know, in any legislative body is necessarily going to be as rapidly pro-housing as some of the people in the room are. And so speaking to these kind of aesthetic, quality of life issues, I think is one way to kind of build a bigger coalition behind any of these efforts. And this has obviously been emphasized a lot by everyone at the table already, but I just want to put a finer point on the importance of the fact that you can build buildings that look a little bit different than we're used to seeing. And that sounds like a small piece, but you know, talking to my colleagues in Annapolis, we're inundated with regular people emails all the time about new developments going up. And I'm sure y'all hear it all the time as well. And one of the biggest complaints you hear is all the new construction looks exactly the same. It's always so boring. It's always so drab. It's supposed to be like cool and modern, but actually it makes the neighborhoods look terrible. And this is one of the levers that people pull when they don't want to see new things being built. It's very easy to say like, it just doesn't look very good. If it looked better, maybe I'd be for it. But it just looks terrible. And I think what's so exciting about this kind of idea, at least it was exciting for my colleagues in Annapolis when I brought up this argument, is like, hey, you know how you're inundated with emails every time a new development comes up from people that don't like how it looks like and they think that all the buildings look the same? Well, this is your bill. This is the idea here that we can actually get some diversification in what buildings look like, especially on small lots, to make the built environment more interesting, which is not only a livability, sort of dignity issue once you step outside of your apartment, but it's also in terms of speeding up the development process, limiting opposition. And it also just gets back to sort of carbon footprint and everything as well because you're getting back to those urbanist elements where you walk down the street and you have eyes on the street and, and things look beautiful. So I just wanted to put a finer point on that as well, which my, you know, colleagues up here have done a better job articulating earlier.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for telling why people said yes. So that, that's, that's great. Did you have any comments?
I, I have very few comments because I'm, I'm a fellow traveler. I'm already on board. I honestly, this is all good. It's a very common sense reform. It's as safe as anything we have. We're not building, you know, they're not building things that have tenement fires anymore. We can adjust and have flexibility with our safety issues and we have houses and buildings that are, that are much safer than they, they used to be by a long shot, two stairs or not. And this is just something we should have done years ago. The only other question I have, and I really just want to hear from sort of everybody on the panel, if you have any thoughts on this, is I think that one of the interesting, we're going to get, we're going to be, zoning has been the big thing for the last five or 10 years as we've talked about zoning reform and density and things like that. And as we sort of get through that, the next thing is going to be the building code. And so not over a single stair, but other aspects of the building code that restrict what we have as Delegate Vaughn said, for, you know, once you get through everything, everything's got to look the same. It just does. There's just fiscal constraints that, that come in there through the building code. But I did want to see if, if there's some comments because this is great if you can build it, but there's only certain places you can build them. So what about the zoning interacting with the building code? Do we need to address to make sure that these are available and possible to build in different areas? Have you thought about things, particularly from the council member there, of different types of zoning, less, less types of zoning, more functional types of zoning? Like, what have you thought about in those regards as well to sort of maximize the ability? And I'm putting you on the spot and I noticed that. Fun, come, join us.
There's nothing I think about more, honestly.
Let's chat afterwards.
Yeah. There's two things. Where can you build multifamily housing in general? It's prohibited in, in Baltimore City and in most cities and probably more in other places. 70% of the land that we say is for residential use. 70% of the residentially zoned land can never, ever be any more housing than what already exists there today because we adopted a map and a policy 100 years ago that said that all of this land can only be used for this extremely inefficient use of single-family detached homes. Not that some people shouldn't, you know, plenty of people shouldn't be allowed to have single-family detached homes if they want them, if they need them. But that we make policy that says that that is the only thing that could possibly exist there is a real problem. So, but, you know, on many neighborhoods, streets that have already been developed, my mother grew up in Wheaton in a rancher on Hayes Avenue. She went to Glen Haven Elementary. She, she, a neighborhood street like that isn't such, just going to have like one five-story building in the middle of the block. We're not going to throw all this out, likely, right? There are places that are just throwing it all out. Let's do it. Fewer zoning categories, yes, we have over the last 100 years gone just like, how can we tweak the way that we say no just a little bit differently for this, just this particular area? And it's just lots and lots and lots of ways of finding ways to say no, no, no to littler and littler, more nitpicking things. And so we've created R1 through R10-plus subcategories. You know, that's just what we have in Baltimore. And that's just for residential. There are places though where we already say 68 feet is allowable. And there are other places where we say only 35 feet is allowable. You know, building code modifications aren't proposing new changes to that. That would have to happen in zoning codes. So when I talk to people about Baltimore's single-stair bill, I remind them, we're only allowing, we're only saying you can build differently and up to this height in the places where we've places where we've already said that height is already allowable. And that's in zoning.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we thank you, we want to leave some room for people in the audience or online that...
Just real quickly, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the efforts that all of you are taking on this. I'm glad that we're having this conversation here today, but just broadly, to be able to offer more flexibility for how we can more efficiently build housing in smaller, in smaller, on smaller sites with more design options. I was curious, though, Councilmember Dorsey, you talked about the importance of having both state and local action. I'm curious if, if state action is a prerequisite for doing something locally? Or, you know, because we've talked here about wanting to do something and be ready when the state takes action. But is that a requirement? Or is there something that can be done at a local level before the state?
It's not. We have, we're not doing a study in Baltimore. We have a bill to modify our adoption of the building code. We adopted the International Building Code, and if you read through Baltimore's Building and Housing Codes, it'll say section X, Y, or Z as in IBC. And then there will be a section that says not adopted. We choose at the local level to adopt which portions we want and don't want from any of these national and the codes that are adopted at the state level. And so what we're doing here is modifying a section of the IBC to suit our needs.
And also just very briefly, as Councilmember Dorsey said earlier, from a statewide perspective, we would love for localities to go ahead and start taking their other steps, because to the extent that we want to push any statewide reforms, it makes our job much easier. And I also say in talking about this bill this past session, the fact that Baltimore was already moving, the fact that there was going to be a bill introduced, was a great talking point to me to say, hey, you know, before all these cities start doing their own thing, all these counties start doing their own thing and legalizing things, wouldn't it make sense, or at least while they're doing that, why wouldn't we be studying as well? This is not something that we're just going to, you know, kick the can down the road and we can put the lid on. You know, if you feel uncomfortable about this as a state legislator, this isn't something that we can stop by not having a study, put our head in the sand, because cities and counties are going to be moving on their own accord anyway, so it makes sense for us to go ahead and join the fray.
Also, in terms of having really great talking points, it was in the course of introducing this bill and getting it prepared, and also meeting, you saw a slide that Julian had in his slide deck of a newly renovated single-stair building in Baltimore. It's called the Crook Horner Lofts. It just won a really great prize from the Urban Land Institute as for, partly recognized for being the kind of things that can change cities and that can change minds, that these are examples of what's possible. And the Crook Horner Loft building, when I asked like, how did you do this? They said, under the International Existing Building Code, duh, I had no idea such a thing existed. I had heard of the IBC over and over again, I had never heard of the IEBC. That building you see on your screen is already allowed to exist as a single-stair building. And, and so an important talking point for me has been to say, if I can modify a building that is a hundred years old to make it a single-stair building allowable, as long as I modify it to have these fire safety standards, why shouldn't I be allowed to do the exact same thing with brand-new construction?
Yeah, great. So that great question, Mr. Sartori. Before we go to the audience, I mean, I want to be respectful of the panel's time. Do you have a little bit more time or, or you need to end up now? What, you're good, you're good, so we'll take some consensus from the panel, you're, you can, okay. Why don't we ask, see if there are any questions from the audience or online?
I did get one question sent in from Eileen from Park sent to me. Councilmember Dorsey, she was wondering if there's any part in your bill that has requirements around maintaining the pressurization in the stairwells. So any backup generator or maintenance requirements around ensuring that that stays up to code?
This is a good and fair question. Systems that we put in place are only as good as how well they are maintained and up-kept. This is why we have inspections, recurring inspections for sprinklers, sprinkler systems, right? A ninety-minute fire-rated door isn't worth anything if somebody has stuck a trash can in front of it to prop it open. You've got to have automatic closures on these things, and they've got to be functioning, and the tenants in the building need to know not to prop them open. You know, I think it's perfectly reasonable to require periodic inspections of the systems to make sure that they're still operating when they are life-safety kind of systems. That's not in the bill, but you know, it's something that's come up as a, you know, idea.
We have one behind, behind you here.
Thanks, everybody, for taking your time to be here. So like Councilmember Dorsey, I was radicalized to single-stair by being in Germany. And I actually lived there for a couple of years. And when you live there, you get to go into the basement. And what you notice when you go into the basement of a building in Germany that's this size, that is what you're talking about, it looks like a single-family house. The building systems are not nearly as elaborate as what you see in apartment buildings in the United States. You don't have all of this fire protection equipment with stand pipes, and you don't have a backup generator, and you don't have all of these other things to Chair Harris's point. If, they would call that a von house. And if you translate that, it's just a building for living. We used to, in the United States, call these apartment houses, just in the same way that we would say a house of worship or a house for all of these other things. And not to like go too far into etymology, but this divergence happened because of the way that we started treating houses differently than apartments and differently than everything else. And we did that a century ago. And so you no longer see these things as similar things, and that's rippled through everything, the building code, but that's rippled through finance as well. You no longer have developers who are able to build something like this today, because we haven't had a building like this in a hundred years. When we go into finance, that's the piece that I eventually am going to get to, which is that we, we don't have a system for this. We have a really well-oiled machine for building single-family homes, we have a really well-oiled machine for building large apartment buildings. And architects get really excited about single-stair, but developers don't, because they see that this is a gap. What are, in addition to maybe finance, and maybe you can get into some specifics if you know, but what are some of those, you know, after elevators, after maybe some of these other building code tweaks? What are the remaining pieces? Because it sounds like single-stair is necessary, and the stair itself is necessary, but it might not be sufficient to, to actually get these buildings produced. So we've got until 2027 at the state level. What do we need to be doing in the meantime to, to make these things actually happen?
The developers in Baltimore are stoked on this. I think there is an appetite for it and a belief that it's viable financially. In fact, when we, at the end of the CNU competition, we did Q and A, and I think the very first thing that we heard from an audience member there was, you know, like, I'm ready to build, but like I can't build this kind of building. I don't have the deep pockets necessary to build that building. I can build a building of this size. I have the financial access, the capital access, to be able to build a building of this size, at this scale. I just need this law changed so that I can actually do it. And, and the Baltimore Development Work Group is kind of an informal group of small and mid-sized developers in the city. And the Baltimore, the Baltimore chapter of the Maryland Building Industry Association is kind of a mix of people in a bunch of different aspects of the professional building world, and they're just all like, where do we sign up? Where can we write you a letter of support for this? We, we all want to make this happen. So I, you know, I, I think it's got viability, but maybe there are some others, you know, I think the market, as more places change the law, the, the financial market for this is probably also going to expand as people figure out they can make money on small buildings, just like they can make money lending for big buildings.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, panel. My name is Robbie Savakant, I am the Director of Department of Permanent Services. The department that is tasked with both developing, administering, and enforcing our building codes. So this is, this concept is very intriguing to me. I just wanted to point that out, convey that. As a department that is kind of very forward-thinking, we like to say, you know, a vision for world-class, we want to look at ideas like this and consider them as part of our local adoption. So we don't necessarily want to wait until legislation is passed. We're, we're actually looking at this, as I pointed out to the Commissioner, we, we've met, we've discussed this, we do realize that the, even at the national level, you know, momentum is already happening. But, you know, as you see with a lot of Montgomery County, we tend to, you know, you know, don't wait, we, we kind of chart our own path. And we want to do this in the best interest of the state and our stakeholders. So I just wanted to convey to you that I appreciate the panel, I appreciate the concept, and we will work with, in concert with the county executive, planning commission. So just rest assured that you're not going to get objection from Montgomery County. We're going to do whatever we feel like is in the best interest moving forward. We fully recognize, I mean, you know, safety, that's what we do, that's paramount. But I appreciate what was pointed out about the, the really, some of the positive aspects of this concept, particularly with the livability, the light and air and openness. You know, we talk a lot about, you know, safety, which is our main task, but we know now, we, we are really, the codes are transcending. We're now doing much more on sustainability side. So we have to factor that all in, into consideration. But again, I just want you to know that Montgomery County DPS will be, you know, working, you know, within our best to help make sure that, you know, we see this manifest.
Thank you, thank you. We really appreciate that. Any other questions from the audience?
My name is Santiago Rios, I am the Volunteer Services intern for the summer. My question goes, well, first of all, I'm an architecture student, and I really appreciated the diagrams and just to see how, the way that a single staircase can completely reconfigure the whole program, and have like these bigger spaces that are more dignifying for the people living in it. But I guess my question goes towards more policy. And my biggest thing is, we talk about how like the passive design keeps costs down for both construction and functional energy while living in it for the user, but what's keeping these properties from now rising in value and keep them affordable for another family in like the next like ten years or so?
The supply, you know, just building more just keeps the value, you know, it just, getting more housing online is what's killing affordability in every city. And all the restrictions that have been pointed out from the character and marring the place that people like and all these other objections. So yeah, there's nothing really fixed in a market economy for good and bad, so the only real solution is to allow for more, as long as it's ecologically responsible and, and all the things that we care about.
And I, I also think that this concept can be embraced by all kinds of developers, from, you know, normal for-profit developers to nonprofit or lytech developers even. So I think it's a kind of universal concept that can be embraced across the board. And then also, you know, the lack of that, there's that inherent efficiency with the lack of the second stair that I think has been shown to decrease construction cost in the first place.
Okay, that completely makes sense, thank you very much for your answer. But I guess like, my biggest thing is like, I compare it right now. So I grew up in South Carolina, and I moved here two years ago to College Park, and I currently live in College Park. So we talk about building more, so there's more opportunity for people to move in these places. But when you look at College Park, we have all these luxury apartments that currently are not vacated, they're empty, and they're still over $2,000, $1,800. So that's what I mean, it's like, what are you guys doing to control like, you know, I don't know, like property value taxes, for example, from keep rising up if more, if this becomes a more desirable place to live?
I mean, I think that the supply part of this is just, cannot be understated. In Baltimore City, we have research on market and demand. We have good numbers that show us, we, a city that has been losing population since the end of World War II, and has gone from a million to 560,000 people, actually could be growing by at minimum 5,300 households every year. The actual numbers that we have are 5,300 to 6,800 is the number of households we could grow by every single year, and that the only thing keeping us from meeting that growth potential is lack of available dwelling units, because those numbers are coupled with a statement of if a sufficient number of dwelling units were constructed or renovated. And last year, we had only 1,900 new units come online in Baltimore City. We only had 2,400 the year before that, 3,400 the year before that, 3,600 the year before that, and 3,400 the year before that. We only permitted 1,000 units last year. It's really hard to permit new housing in a system that for a hundred years, as I said a minute ago, has been going, well, let's say no to this little thing here and this little thing here, and creating a system of more intricate ways of saying no to more things in ways that just continue to chisel away every opportunity to build housing, to where the only thing that's left that you can build are really big buildings that cost a lot of money to build. When you can build a lot more small buildings, you can bring a lot more units that have just enough of a reduced cost of construction onto, online, that they start to create such an influx of growth in the market that, that your costs stop rising if you build them enough. The same guy who built this, did this renovation, the Crook Horner Building, did a building kind of on the other side of the city in Highland Town a couple of years ago. And he had it open for a year or two, and then about a half a mile east of there, down the same road, another brand-new apartment kind of complex building, multi-story, multifamily development opened up. And he said overnight, our rent yield dropped by 10%, simply because so many more units came online in the market. In places that we have seen zoning change enacted, like in Austin and Salt Lake City and Minneapolis, we have seen those cities go from having annual predictable increases in rent to very, very sharp decreases in rent commensurate with the number of new dwelling units that have come online because of policy reform enacted that made it possible to bring more units online. This is another component of making it possible and practical to bring a higher volume of units online, so we can realize those rent decreases and not, and not so much have to worry about, you know, what are we going to do to stop it from increasing? It's literally decreasing in places where we bring more units online.
So I think that you, you've hit it, the nail on the head, you know, we need more supply, we need to reduce barriers to providing more housing. I really, really appreciate, this has been a wonderful discussion. So thank you, Paul Mordenson, for organizing it, thank you for all those that helped put this together today, and we look forward to more of these in the future. And thank you Congressman and Delegate for, Councilmember and Delegate for, for putting, you know, focusing on the policy and making sure these things get through. So, and thank you for our participants. So Paul, do you have anything last to say? Well, well, this ends our Planning Board meeting today and ends our presentation. Thank you for everyone that came, and thank you for everyone that participated. Thank you.
Thank you.